Welcome to the March 8, 2018 meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilman Kurt Wade has our prayer and our pledge.
All right, let's pray. Lord, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for Murfreesboro. We thank you for the leadership that we have in our city. Most of all, we just thank you for what you're doing in our lives. Lord, we ask you to bless our country, bless our service providers, in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I've asked Ms. Megan Flippin, she's the President and CEO of the United Way of Rutherford County and Cannon Counties, to come. And we had a meeting the other day, and she was telling me about the 2-1-1 program. And I said I thought it'd be good for her to tell the council about that. So Megan, it's good to have you here tonight.
Well, thank you so much, and good evening, Mayor McFarland and council members. Again, my name is Megan Flippin, and I have the honor of serving as the CEO for our local United Way. And my role here tonight is to share a service with you all that is provided to residents of Rutherford and Cannon Counties via our local United Way. So I do have a presentation here on the screen. That service is 2-1-1. And similar to 9-1-1, it is a number to call but for non-life-threatening emergencies. So 2-1-1 is a free and confidential service that helps people find resources 24/7. It can be anything from someone in need of food, clothing, shelter. It could be a parent whose child has been diagnosed with a learning disability, and they're looking for tutoring and homework help. It could be someone whose elderly parent maybe has just learned that they have dementia, and they're not really sure what services are available to them. So there's about 4,000 different services just in the middle Tennessee area that are accessed through 2-1-1. So there's also a website, uw211.org. So in addition to being able to call that number, you can also go to this website, and you can see from the screen here in the top right-hand corner, an individual could search the database of services themselves. They can also click on a button down at the bottom to chat to a trained professional, or they can also email or text. So these are some new features that have been added to the 2-1-1 system just here in the last couple of years. And at this time, I like to play a 2-1-1 actual call from here in Murfreesboro.
2-1-1, this is Anna. May I help you?
Yes, Anna, I was wondering, I'm homeless, me and my fiance are homeless, can you guys help us out, or?
Are you looking for a place to stay this evening?
Yes.
Okay, let me see what I can locate. Can I get your name?
Yep, Chelsea, who's Chelsea?
And your zip code? Okay, so you're calling from Murfreesboro?
Yes.
All right. Do you currently receive food stamps?
I do in the state of North Dakota.
Okay, are you going to transfer them, or are you?
Yes, yes, I am.
All right, let's see.
I mean, I work, we work at Labority, but we've been out of work for a couple days, and it's kind of...
Yeah. Okay, there's a program in Murfreesboro, it's through the Salvation Army, and that number is 895-7071. The Salvation Army does also provide a family shelter for families with children.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
So that was an actual call that was made from here in Murfreesboro, from the 371-28 zip code. So to give you an idea, just in 2017, in Rutherford County, we had just over 3,000 calls made. Nearly 2,000 of those calls were from within zip codes within the city of Murfreesboro. And then the total referrals is a little over 5,200. And the reason that number is higher, because oftentimes, within a call, there may be two or three different services that are needed from, for the caller, so they count by referral. And then to give you an idea, just in the fourth quarter of 2017, the highest need category was housing and utility assistance. And that's actually reflected across the country with the 2-1-1 system. And you can see here the different categories within food, meals, healthcare, mental health, et cetera, and different needs that are represented on this list. So the reason we wanted to share this with the council tonight is because as leaders in this community, we wanted to be sure that you are aware of this service that United Way provides in our community, so to be able to share that from your roles. And then if there's any agencies that you may be affiliated with, or other nonprofit organizations, to ensure that they're enrolled in 2-1-1 and part of that database. And then we're also very happy at any time to share any of the data that we have. I shared a little bit with you tonight, but we actually, every quarter, get a pretty large amount of data about the number of calls and the types of calls and the referrals made through the 2-1-1 system. So that concludes my presentation. Thank you for allowing us to share 2-1-1 with you tonight.
Ms. Flippin, thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Hey, and the last ceremonial item we have, because I know she is absolutely sitting watching TV, it's Ashley, my wife's birthday tonight, so happy birthday, Ashley. And I say that in jest, that she's actually watching, watching us, so. All right, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Anything that we need to remove from the consent agenda? All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris, Mr. LaLance, Mr. Shacklet, Mr. Smotherman, Mr. Wade, Mayor McFarland.
You have the minutes for the February 15th, February 22nd, and the February 22nd regular meeting, and, excuse me, the first one was a special meeting. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
There are none to move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move to second readings, and we'll consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18002, amending Appendix A zoning chart two and chart two end notes, minimum lot requirements, minimum yard requirements, and land use intensity ratios pertaining to maximum gross density, and open space requirements in the RSA 2 type 2, RSA type 3 zoning districts, 2017-811.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
You have a letter from the Principal Planner regarding second readings for ordinance 180, excuse me, 18OZ04. This is in North Boulevard and Sulfur Springs Road, and ordinance 18OZ05. Ms. Anthony.
Good evening, sir. We've received revised pattern books for the next two items on the agenda, which are items 4B and 5, and I'll just briefly go over the changes for both of those. Item 4A is the Northfield Village PCD Amendment, which was approved on first reading on February 22nd. The revised pattern book indicates that a sidewalk will be extended along the Sulfur Springs frontage, southward to West Kingwood Drive, as requested by the council. The revision also shows an increase in height from six feet to eight feet for a fence that will be located along the southern property line. Item 5 is the Fortress at Blaze PCD rezoning, which was also approved on first reading on February 22nd. The pattern book for this item has been revised to exclude split-face block and tilt-up concrete panels as building materials. These revisions appear to address the concerns that we heard from the City Council and the Planning Commission. Staff, can I have any questions that you may have?
Any questions? Okay, we'll consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ04, to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 5.6 acres in the planned commercial development PCD district located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulfur Springs Road, Northfield Village PCD.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ05, to rezone an area along Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive to planned commercial development PCD district Fortress and Blaze PCD.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Upstain.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18009, amending Murfreesboro City Code, Appendix A zoning section two interpretations and definitions, chart one and chart one end notes, uses permitted by zoning district, and chart four, required off-street parking and queuing spaces by use pertaining to alcoholic beverage manufacturer.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18, excuse me, ordinance 17OZ58, to zone approximately 34.25 acres as planned residential development PRD district Windwoods PRD, simultaneous with annexation to zone approximately 1.79 acres of single-family attached suburban townhome RSA type 2 district, simultaneous with annexation to rezone approximately 1.3 acres from single-family residential 10 RS 10 district to planned residential development PRD district, and rezone approximately seven acres from single-family residential 10 RS 10 district to single-family attached suburban townhouse district along Florence Road.
So moved. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Upstain.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 17OZ61, to zone an area along Franklin Road as commercial fringe CF district simultaneous with annexation.
So moved.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Upstain.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for approval, a renewal of certificate of compliance for retail liquor store, Guadam P. Patel and Progiec En Patel at CNG Wine and Spirits, 2750 South Rutherford Boulevard. Is everything in order, Ms.?
Yes, mayor, it is. This is their two-year annual requirement by the state.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for approval, a renewal of certificate of compliance for retail liquor store, Guadam P. Patel and Progiec En Patel at CNG Wine and Spirits, 2750 South Rutherford Boulevard. Is everything in order, Ms.?
Yes, mayor, it is. This is their two-year annual requirement by the state.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have the same certificate of compliance for Ankeet Patel at Victory Village Liquor and Wine, 4167 Franklin Road.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We have the same certificate of compliance for Ankeet Patel at Victory Village Liquor and Wine, 4167 Franklin Road.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for approval, a renewal of certificate of compliance for retail liquor store, Guadam P. Patel and Progiec En Patel at CNG Wine and Spirits, 2750 South Rutherford Boulevard. Is everything in order, Ms.?
Yes, mayor, it is. This is their two-year annual requirement by the state.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for approval, a renewal of certificate of compliance for retail liquor store, Guadam P. Patel and Progiec En Patel at CNG Wine and Spirits, 2750 South Rutherford Boulevard. Is everything in order, Ms.?
Yes, mayor, it is. This is their two-year annual requirement by the state.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for approval, a renewal of certificate of compliance for retail liquor store, Guadam P. Patel and Progiec En Patel at CNG Wine and Spirits, 2750 South Rutherford Boulevard. Is everything in order, Ms.?
Yes, mayor, it is. This is their two-year annual requirement by the state.
Okay.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for approval, a renewal of certificate of compliance for retail liquor store, Guadam P. Patel and Progiec En Patel at CNG Wine and Spirits, 2750 South Rutherford Boulevard. Is everything in order, Ms.?
Yes, mayor, it is. This is their two-year annual requirement by the state.
Okay. We'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for and annexation of approximately 3.2 acres along South Church Street and Volunteer Road for the Murfreesboro Medical Center Properties applicant. When we open our public hearing, if you'll come to the podium, if you'll state your name and address, if you'll keep all your comments directed towards the council, if you have any questions, we will get those answered at the end of the public hearing. If you're speaking on behalf of you as an individual, you'll have three minutes, and if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you'll have five minutes. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Enoch Gerald with Huddles and Steel Engineering. Also, the meeting tonight is Mr. Joey P. with Murfreesboro Medical Clinic. As Ms. Green mentioned, we did have a public meeting, a community meeting, I guess you could say, on January the 8th. Volunteer Road, that ends into the Barfield Park. We had the meeting at the Wilderness Center. There's 18 residents along Volunteer. 11 of the 11 of the 18 were present. I think their main concern at that meeting was, would they be annexed as well? And the answer is no, since they are not included in the petition. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have, or if anything that may come up. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll need to consider, excuse me, for adoption of Resolution 18RPS03, to adopt a plan of services for approximately 3.2 acres along South Church Street and Volunteer Road. Murfreesboro Medical Center Properties is the applicant. Ms. Green.
Thank you, sir. As I mentioned, I would be back to provide you some additional information for the second part of the request, which is also to change the zoning for the property simultaneous with its annexation. The subject property is zoned for residential purposes in Rutherford County, and the application we've received is to change the zone to CF simultaneous with annexation. And CF is our commercial fringe district. The property is located at the intersection of Shelbyville Pike, Highway 231, or South Church Street, and Volunteer Road. And it's located directly across from property that is currently zoned CH and PCD. That PCD is the Walmart Supercenter, located on the corner of Joby Jackson Parkway and South Church Street. The properties to the north are also zoned CH, Commercial Highway District. You can see there is a property between this parcel and the properties to the north that is still in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County, and it's developed with a single-family house at this time. There is a significant Colonial Pipeline gas easement and infrastructure that does run adjacent to, but not on this property, although the easement is on this property. The Planning Commission did consider this item in the request for CF, and the request for CF was made because it does allow medical offices. However, it's not as intensive a use as the CH district that's located across the street or just to the north. So they decided to make an application for the least intense commercial use that would permit the use that they desire, which, as I mentioned, was a medical office building on this property. The applicants did hold that neighborhood meeting, which has been mentioned a couple times. The Planning Commission considered this matter, and their recommendation to you is unanimous, and it's that you do change the zone to CF simultaneous with the annexation. Mr. Joey P., representing the clinic, is here, and Mr. Enoch Gerald. And, Mr. Gerald, do you have a presentation? So I think that he just would be available for comments, additional information if you need it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none. We'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ03, to zone an area along South Church Street and Volunteer Road as commercial fringe district simultaneous with annexation.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wade, Mr. Shacklet, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ03, to amend the conditions applicable to approximately 5.6 acres in the planned commercial development PCD district located along West Northfield Boulevard and Sulfur Springs Road, Northfield Village PCD.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ05, to rezone an area along Fortress Boulevard and Blaze Drive to planned commercial development PCD district Fortress and Blaze PCD.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ05, to rezone an area along South Church Street and Volunteer Road as commercial fringe district simultaneous with annexation.
So moved.
Second. Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now move to note new business, and consider for passage on second and final reading ordinance 18OZ03, to zone an area along South Church Street and Volunteer Road as commercial fringe district simultaneous with annexation.
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wade, Mr. Shacklet, Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to the Resolution 18R PH 06 adopted by the City Council on January 25th, 2018, we'll need to conduct a public hearing to consider, one, the adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of 2.5 acres, and, two, the zoning of approximately two acres along Memorial Boulevard to Highway Commercial CH District, which had been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Cynthia Keithley is the applicant. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the February 20th, 2018 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley, we're getting all the planning staff tonight.
That's right, that's right. Um, well, I'd, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, one, a valued member of our planning staff whose last day will be tomorrow, uh, Mr. Robert Lewis, who'll be retiring effective 4:30 tomorrow, um, so we'd like to, uh, make sure we wish him well. We had a little, uh, going-away party for him this afternoon, so I'd be re- remiss if I did not mention that. We'll, we'll certainly miss Mr. Lewis. Um, our next public hearing today is for the annexation of 2.5 acres along the west side of Memorial Boulevard. Um, it's a two-acre parcel, and then we're also looking at the, uh, the right-of-way of Memorial Boulevard directly in front of the subject property, uh, which brings the total acreage to 2.5 acres. Um, Ms. Keithley has power of attorney for her mother, who owns the subject property, and, um, uh, so she has requested annexation and zoning of the subject property. This first presentation will be with respect to the, uh, annexation. Uh, it's really, if we look at the map, it's really a, a gap in the existing city limits. It's a, it's a piece of property that, in staff's opinion, should be in the city limits because it's, uh, it's bordered on the north, south, and west by the existing city limits. Uh, city services are already readily available to serve the subject property, um, and it, uh, in our opinion, makes a good candidate for annexation, and our plan of service bears that out, um, as we've, we'll be able to easily, uh, effect the annexation of this property. Um, with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions regarding the annexation or the plan of services. I'll be back up in a moment after, after you vote on the, the annexation of the plan of services to make a brief presentation on the companion zoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on the plan of services for an annexation of approximately 2.5 acres along Memorial Boulevard. Cynthia Keithley is the applicant. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 18R PS 06 to adopt a plan of services for approximately 2.5 acres located along Memorial Boulevard. Cynthia Keithley is the applicant.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 18R A 06 to annex approximately 2.5 acres along Memorial Boulevard, and to incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Cynthia Keithley is the applicant.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll need to conduct a public hearing to consider zoning of approximately two acres along Memorial Boulevard as Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation. Cynthia Keithley is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is the same property that we just considered for annexation. Um, it's a two-acre parcel that has an existing single-family home on it. The, the applicants have requested, uh, commercial highway zoning simultaneous with annexation. It's bordered on its north and south sides by commercial highway zone. Um, the property to the north is zoned commercial highway but undeveloped. The property to the south is zoned commercial highway but is developed with a single-family residence. It's a rental, single-family home that, I believe, has been purchased as investment property for future development. Uh, to, immediately to the west of the subject property is zoned RM 16, and it's developed with the Paddock Club apartment complex. Uh, Ms. Keithley has requested the commercial highway zone, um, uh, consistent with the, uh, the existing zoning in the area, uh, including the zoning of the Publix Shopping Center a little bit further to the south. The, uh, Murfreesboro 2035 Future Land Use Map does show, uh, this segment of the frontage of Memorial Boulevard as auto-urban general commercial, uh, which would enable, uh, such uses as, uh, restaurants, uh, gas stations, other retail uses, and it, uh, it identifies the commercial highway zone as a zone that's consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan. Uh, so in that respect, the CH zoning request is consistent with the recommendations of the plan. Uh, I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and Ms. Keithley is present if you have any questions for her.
Any questions? Ms. Ms. Blomley, I say, everyone, is this consistent with the majority of the property that's out there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll need to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ 06 to zone an area along Memorial Boulevard as Highway Commercial CH District simultaneous with annexation 2017 dash four forty-seven.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Pursuant to Resolution 18R PH 07 adopted by the City Council on January 25th, 2018, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider the adoption of a plan of services for an annexation of 10.7 acres and the zoning of approximately 10.7 acres along Cherry Lane to single-family attached type-two RSA type-two district, which has been proposed to be annexed to the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Catalyst Design Group is the applicant. Notice of said public hearing was published in the February 20th, 2018 issue of a local newspaper. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Uh, this property is located along the north side of Cherry Lane, directly across Cherry Lane from the Siegel Soccer Park, uh, has been requested to be annexed and zoned RSA type-two. Uh, I'll go more into the zoning in our, in my next presentation. Um, the, uh, subject property is contiguous with the existing city limits and, uh, is within the city's urban growth boundary. There is an existing house on the subject property, as well as several outbuildings, that our fire department in its current state cannot provide fire protection services to those existing structures. So, uh, and, and the house, the house and the associated structure sit a good ways off of Cherry Lane, so, uh, discussed this with, uh, Mr. Gilliland, the applicant, um, and who seeks to develop the property, and he's trying to work with the, uh, the existing residents and give them time to, to move out. He understands that, um, the recommendations of staff and the planning commission and the fire department are that these structures either be demolished or a laundry list of improvements to help get access for fire trucks, uh, back to the, uh, back to the house be, uh, constructed, uh, prior to the annexation of the subject property. So what Mr. Gilliland has agreed to is, uh, if the zoning is approved on, on first reading, um, he would, uh, request that we delay the second reading in time for him to give, uh, ample time for the existing residents there, the existing owners, to be able to, uh, move out, and then for him to demolish the structures. He said that that could be as much as, as six months, but he is prepared to, uh, delay second reading. Um, that would not, if you choose to annex the property, uh, tonight, that would not cause an issue because the annexation would not go into effect until the zoning goes into effect. So, uh, the delaying of second reading would effect, would effectively delay the annexation as well. Uh, another point of interest, uh, that was, uh, brought up in our plan of services is that sewer is not readily available to serve the subject property. They will actually have to extend a sewer line through the park property to the south. Uh, the, the applicants have worked with our Parks and Recreation Department, and our Parks and Recreation Department, uh, is amenable to working with the applicant to have that sewer line, um, extended through the park property. Of course, uh, the applicant has committed to working with the Parks and Recreation Department so as not to disrupt normal activities, soccer games, and the like, uh, that go on on the park property. Uh, with that being said, we will be able to provide services to the subject property upon annexation, um, once the conditions of the fire department are met. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and Mr. Gilliland, um, who, Catalyst Design Group is listed as the applicant, but they are actually representing, uh, Larry Gilliland, who will be the proposed, uh, developer and seeks to purchase the property.
Mr. Blomley, it looks like the manhole for the sewer, is it in one of the parking lots at, at Siegel? Uh, it, it looks like that the, it's going through the main entrance is, but I can't tell where exactly sewer, sewer is.
Without, without an aerial photograph to overlay that on, I'm not certain the exact route that it would take through the, through the park property.
I mean, I can't imagine the sewer is out in the middle of one of the fields. It, it would have to be somewhere in one of the, I assume, the parking lots, so.
It'd seem logical.
Okay, all right. We need to consider, uh, have a public hearing for this plan of services, and for the annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
I own the property at 604 Cherry Lane. Um, I've read everything, um, but my concern now is the diseased pine trees. There's one that's like twenty, twenty-five feet tall, and it's like ten feet from my house. So if it falls, it, I have a letter where I got it looked at years ago, and pictures, if it falls, it's probably gonna fall on my house. So is that gonna be addressed or looked at or removed? Because if, they do have to do blasting, so.
I, I tell you what we'll do, I'm gonna make a note right now about that, and then when we get done with the annexation and the plan of services, then we'll do that at, during the zoning.
All right.
So, we'll get that answer, we'll get that answer for you.
Appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you, Ms. Joyce. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for adoption Resolution 18R PS 07 to adopt a plan of services for approximately 10.7 acres along Cherry Lane. Catalyst Design Group is the applicant.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider for adoption Resolution 18R A 07 to annex approximately 10.7 acres along Cherry Lane, and incorporate the same within the corporate boundaries of the city of Murfreesboro, Tennessee. Catalyst Design Group is the applicant.
So move.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright?
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now conduct a public hearing to consider zoning of approximately 10.7 acres along Cherry Lane as single-family attached type-two RSA type-two district simultaneous with annexation. Catalyst Design Group is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Mayor McFarland, before I get into that, I did wanna, um, I think, we found an exhibit that the applicant provided that I think will help answer your question from earlier, and I've got that on the screen now. Um, the, uh, proposed sewer line is overlaid on this exhibit provided by the applicant. Um, and you can see, it looks like that, uh, that manhole, uh, will go predominantly through the parking lot.
Okay, so that's coming, um, that's coming from the pavilion and up the sidewalk where Field Eight and Nine, yeah?
That far over?
Yeah, there's the.
That's Field Ten.
Yeah. So there's the pavilion right there. There's the main entrance. It's going down, up that sidewalk.
It doesn't look like it makes it up.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Better than coming from this way.
The next request is the zoning of the subject property simultaneous with annexation, and the applicant has requested a zoning classification of RSA type-two. The RSA zone is the new zone that we adopted in late 2017, and type-two is the townhouse version, the suburban townhouse version of RSA, which stands for Single Family Residential Attached. Uh, the subject property is bordered on its, uh, north, east, and west side by single-family residential development in the unincorporated county, um, and across the street, it's zoned P Park for the Siegel Soccer Park. Further to the, uh, east at the intersection of Cherry Lane and, uh, Memorial Boulevard are several parcels that were zoned commercial fringe, uh, speculatively for potential commercial development, uh, about four or five years ago, and further to the, uh, west is the, um, Liberty Village Town Home and Single Family Residential Development. That's a PRD that is located within the city limits. As I mentioned, the applicants are requesting a zoning of RSA type-two, which would enable, uh, the, single-family attached development, specifically, uh, single-family attached development that we would normally identify as, uh, townhomes. The RSA type-two zone, um, has with it some, some special, uh, development requirements that were adopted when we amended the zoning ordinance to, uh, to add the RSA zone. Um, each building facade is required to contain a minimum of seventy-five percent brick, stone, or cementitious siding. Uh, in addition, um, prior to, prior to the most recent zoning ordinance amendment, there was a, uh, minimum open space requirement for developments only ten acres or greater. We've since removed the ten-acre minimum, and there is a, a minimum open space requirement for all townhome, all townhome developments now. The, uh, also on that latest zoning ordinance amendment that you adopted on second reading tonight, uh, the maximum density in the RSA type-two zone was decreased from twenty-one dwelling units per acre to twelve dwelling units per acre. So it's a substantial decrease in the maximum number of dwelling units allowed in the RSA type-two zone. The Murfreesboro 2035 Future Land Use Map calls this pro, or calls this property to be developed as auto-urban general residential, and you can see I've put the, uh, Future Land Use Map on the screen. Uh, this residential classification is heavily dependent on the automobile and includes detached residential dwellings as well as attached housing types, subject to compatibility and open space standards, e.g., duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and patio homes. The plan recommends a density of 3.54 to 8.64 dwelling units per acre. The uses permitted in the RSA type-two zone are consistent with the uses recommended in the comprehensive plan for the auto-urban general residential classification. However, the maximum density, which is now at twelve dwelling units per acre in the RSA type-two zone, far exceeds, or not, the old density far exceeded the, uh, the recommended density, but the, uh, new density exceeds it by about three and a half dwelling units per acre. Uh, the applicant does indicate, however, that the, uh, that his plan actually is at about 6.3 dwelling units per acre. So although, uh, by right, you could develop a maximum of twelve dwelling units per acre, according to Mr. Gilliland and his engineer, uh, their plans that they intend to develop on the property, uh, are approximately 6.3 dwelling units per acre. With that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions, oh, and to address, um, uh, the, the neighbor's concerns about the tree, what, what, uh, it would be my recommendation that she get with Mr. Gilliland and, uh, and perhaps meet him out on the property, and, uh, perhaps Mr. Gilliland, um, could assist with, with any, any trees that are, uh, that are a nuisance there, and, um, and that, uh, that she finds, finds may, uh, be damaging to her, or, that she finds may, uh, possibly cause damage to her house in the future if it's not, uh, taken down.
Ms. Joyce, would that be okay if we did that? Okay, perfect. Okay, we'll need to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Jared Cunningham, Catalyst Design Group, just, uh, wanted to say, believe we worked with staff, more than happy to answer any questions you have. Did want to note that, um, with the, with the sewer question, it's preliminary layout, we're more than happy to work with staff to run that through location. That doesn't affect any, um, ballgames or anything like that, so we're, we're definitely amenable to that.
Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We'll consider for passage on first reading ordinance 18OZ 07 to zone an area along Cherry Lane as single-family attached type-two RSA type-two district simultaneous with annexation. Um, Mr. Gilliland, do you feel pretty confident that this is the product y'all are gonna do? Build there?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. I feel pretty confident about that product. We may do a slight variation. The product that we submitted has one-car garages. Right now, we're studying a mix of one and two-car garages, so, uh, we felt like it would be a superior product, should that happen.
No other questions, I move. Oh, you have the. No, you're fine, go ahead.
No other questions, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll consider recommendations of Superintendent Facilities to request new, for new positions for maintenance foreman and custodian for the new police headquarters facility. Mr. Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, here requesting today, one new maintenance foreman position and one new custodian position for the new police headquarters facility. Justification, uh, during the transition planning process, it was determined that the transfer from the existing PD facilities to the larger headquarters facility created an eighty-seven thousand square foot increase of net, of net space, uh, service gap to be cleaned and maintained. It's a lot of, a lot of area. The current police department facility totaling sixty-seven thousand square feet are maintained by two full-time custodians with the use of daily Rutherford County workhouse assistants. Excuse me. Chief Bowen and staff, uh, feel increased building security measures, uh, built into the facility itself, and generally, uh, increasing security concerns remove the possibility of utilizing, uh, workhouse assistants in the new facility, further increasing the need for additional full-time resources. If, if approved, two new positions will be added to the current general government building's budget with intentions to permanently shift PD building maintenance and custodian responsibilities to the general government building budget, beginning with fiscal year 2019. New positions outlining the duties, responsibilities, and costs are provided, uh, as attachments for your review. You should have them up there. Fiscal impact, current PD budget has sufficient fiscal year 2018 funding available, uh, to cover all costs associated with this request. Staff recommend City Council approve, uh, new position request for one maintenance foreman, one, and one custodian. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, this is not a budget amendment. The dollars are in the police department budget, but we do need you to authorize the two positions, the actual headcount, for the work to be done. Move-in is scheduled for the month of April.
The first group moves in the second of April, second group moves in the 16th of April, and the remaining start moving in the first of May.
Mr. Crumley, is it possible that, on this one, I understand we probably want to have employees that are in sensitive areas?
Yes.
But like we talked about at our workshop, that maybe on some of these others, we look at, you know, is there a private solution that maybe we can bid some of these out?
Yes, there is. And we're also looking at the landscaping. As you've driven by Highland Avenue recently, you'll know the landscaping package is in and looking very nice. That has to be maintained also. And in addition to having urban environment look at it, we will also be potentially seeking proposals to maintain that from private firms. Inside the police department building itself, I think, security-wise, the chief feels better that it's employees of the city.
If I may speak on that a little bit, we've looked at private cleaning companies, found the total cost is actually more, and they have high turnover rates of folks, being that their pay scales are low. And within the PD, you have to have a higher clearance to get inside the building itself.
Sure.
So, and it's a large building at that. So if you have a high turnover of folks and people are lost, and you've been inside that building, it's going to be difficult for the new folks and then the high turnover to get that, keep that building clean. Also, there's zero flexibility with the cleaning service. They come in and go clean this room now, this room the following day. There's no flexibility whatsoever in that. And they follow the contract to the letters. If we ask them to do anything above and beyond the contract, it's additional funding. If we have our own folks there, they're familiar with the building, they have security clearances, and they can do what we ask them to do, including minor maintenance. It's just an easier way to keep our building taken care of with our folks.
Okay.
We talked about this, you know, pretty briefly at our first workshop, and, you know, I didn't really expect to see it on the agenda this quickly, even though you might have said it might come up pretty fast. You know, part of what, you know, there's some other questions I'm not sure anybody's mentioned today, but I mean, is this what the police chief wants? Is it, I mean, because we're changing up a format here on who falls under whom and all that kind of stuff, is this?
Some departments will keep their own people, but a majority of them are shifting their custodial and light maintenance workforce to Ron's Facility Management Division. Police Department made the decision that they wanted to go turnkey to facilities management for the new headquarters building. Senior Center has decided that they want to go turnkey to facilities management for their building. I'm not sure if any.
There's no other.
Morris Road is still using contract, aren't they, Ron?
Yes, sir. There's no other.
We just hadn't heard that side yet, you know, I mean, I just didn't know if.
The idea is the program grows is to grab a little more each year and get more folks as needed. I don't want to grow too fast and then have difficulties keeping up with the responsibilities and the duties.
I might add, we've talked with Mr. Dennis as well, and we're going to try to help implement something in Munich so we can track the costs within his budget that actually belongs to other budgets. For example, if he has someone in his budget, or he buys supplies for, say, senior citizens, we're going to try to keep that coded so we can keep up, and help him manage and not have to do it in Excel, but manage what he's buying for each of the facilities that he is managing under his budget.
Okay.
All right.
Any questions? Or any other questions?
One question, and certainly I think because of the sensitivity of it, this is a perfect example of where it needs to be internal. I know we're really close to completion on the police department. Have we got the fence put back up along the cemetery yet?
We have not. I spoke with Mr. Rucker yesterday, and there's still some disagreement, I think, about whether to reinstall the fence. I have not seen the fence where it's now, and I promised Jacque I would get over there this week and take a look at it.
Okay. I know there's some people on the cemetery board that think that fence is very important that it be there, but.
It very well may be a portion of fence that's rendered obsolete by the security fencing around the police department.
I think it's, they're talking about right next to the parking lot there, though. I know there's a kind of a retainer wall, I guess, set there against that, but I guess up on top of that, they don't want people coming from that parking lot over into the cemetery, so they're kind of wanting that buffer back that they've always had there. And I don't understand it completely myself, but I do understand that they're concerned.
No other questions, I move, we approve the recommendations of the.
In a second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Thank you, Ms. Dennis.
Thank you.
And I'll consider recommendations of the Office of Director to approve Statement of Work Number Two under the basic contract agreement with Icon Enterprises to purchase the Civic Clerk Agenda Management Module.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, Vice Mayor Harris, and City Council. Roughly a year ago, the IT Department began to receive complaints from city employees, council members, and citizens that our boards and council agendas were not functioning correctly. The major issue was the inability or slowness while downloading the agenda packet. The other major issue was the inability to open these packets once the file was downloaded. The root cause of these issues was identified to be file corruption due to exceeding the recommended size of PDF files or the use of multiple versions of PDF writers in the creation of the agenda packet. Citizens have also requested the ability to read the agenda without downloading the whole packet, and also the ability to perform key word searches throughout past agendas. Our current agenda module does not support these options. A decision was made by city management and IT Department to find a solution that would remedy our issues and meet the request of our citizens. An agenda selection team was formed to search for agenda management software. Several solutions were reviewed, and the team selected a solution known as Civic Clerk. Civic Clerk is a comprehensive solution that will streamline the agenda creation process. This software will give us the ability to manage agenda packets of any size, automated agenda approval tracking, ability to access the content on any device, a search tool to find keywords and subject matter. Civic Clerk is owned and operated by Civic Plus, which is currently our website provider. The IT Department, along with the agenda selection team, recommend the purchase of Civic Clerk as an additional module to our current website solution. The cost is anticipated to be $12,000 for year one. This includes setup, customization, and user training. Annual maintenance costs will be $9,000 per year. This will be paid and maintained out of the IT budget. I open for any questions.
Finally. Any questions?
I move for approval.
Motion is second. Thank you, Ms. Shirley. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Never mind. Never mind, sorry.
All right. I have one recommendation of commission appointment for the public building authority to reappoint Mr. Don Witherspoon.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade. Mayor McFarland.
All right, you have a couple of beer permits, Ms. Wright.
We do. We have a special event application from United Way for an event to be held at 2239 Shannon Drive on May the 11th. That application is in order. Additionally, we have an application for a restaurant at 1529 East Main Street. They have had beer there before, but they do have a new owner. That application is in order, except they lack their final building codes inspections. We would issue that if you approve it after they have received approval on those. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Any statements to be paid?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Crumley, I think you have some other business.
One piece of actionable business and a couple of pieces of information. You all would pass down those little task orders here. Mentioned to you that our plan on the Highland Avenue Police Headquarters was to utilize the services of CBRE, HIRI, and Pinnacle Construction Company for a number of different items beyond the audit of the post-construction building. That audit's been completed, but it's better presented by Craig Tindall when he's back at our next regular meeting, as Craig followed it from beginning to end. However, this outlines the other services of HIRI and Pinnacle Construction that we would like to procure, not only for Highland Avenue, but also for 302 South Church Street, the existing police headquarters. Substantial items include commissioning of the mechanical systems in the new police headquarters, doing some training with our folks on the use of those systems, follow-up reviews on a regular basis, follow-up inspections of the building during the warranty period on the building, and then the decommissioning of 302 South Church Street. This order in front of you, Greg and I have spoken, we'll need to correct this, South Church Street is not on this particular work order, but it is part of the not to exceed $65,000 for CBRE, HIRI, Pinnacle's performance. We'd like for you to go ahead and bless this. We'll clean up the contract tomorrow and get this underway. Funding for everything related to the Highland Avenue headquarters is from the contingency still left in the construction contract. Funding for decommissioning 302 South Church Street will come from the police department's regular budget. We'd recommend your approval of this not to exceed $65,000. So moved.
Second.
Motion is second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
As a follow-up to our work session on Monday, and again, thank you all for your time on Monday, our department heads found that invaluable to get your read on what we need to be doing organizationally in the upcoming budget. One of the follow-up items, and I just emailed it to you since we've started council meeting, is the tally sheet of where we have gone so far with owners' representatives. To date, we've actually contracted with the CBRE-HIRI contract you just approved, $144,000 of construction management services, 94 with CBRE, HIRI, Pinnacle exclusively on police work, $50,000 with Savalas for the pre-construction work on the Doug Young Training Center and the Murfreesboro Airport Terminal. Our intentions are to proceed with Savalas on the airport terminal and the Doug Young Training Center. We've asked HIRI and Pinnacle to step up and look at the prototype Fire Station 11 and be our owners' representative on Fire Station 11. We've asked both firms to submit proposal for being owners' representatives on Blackman Park. We think Blackman Park will really benefit from having an owners' representative on that job, multi-dimensional, multi-year, multitask. It seems to be that an owners' rep on that project would work well. But that's our score sheet. That's really an information item for you, and if you need a hard copy of it, I'd be glad to go print that off also. Last but not least, in terms of information items, one of the other discussion points at Monday's work session was the upcoming financing of the city's CIP. And the discussion ran between how should the city split its borrowings between variable-rate financing and fixed-rate financing. We clearly understand the value of variable-rate financing. It is a true tool that we use when interest rate costs are high and we need to hold the line on budgets. However, the easiest way for me to describe our current situation is to ask you to turn to page three, where you'll see a graphic on the page. The red line on that page is the fixed rate that closely matches where Murfreesboro has sold, both historically and where Cumberland believes will sell in the future. The blue line is the variable rate with a 50-basis-point add-in. That 50 basis points is generic. That does not represent either the Tennessee municipal league product or any other product. It's just a 50-basis-point add-on for the cost of administering a variable-rate pool. The closer those lines are together, the less valuable variable-rate financing is. As of March the 7th, the gap between a variable-rate financing and a fixed-rate financing was down to just 85 basis points. We think there's finance risk, there's interest rate risk in going into the variable-rate product in an interest rate-rising environment, knowing that there's probably one to two more Fed rate increases to come in 2018. As the spread between the variable and the fixed rate expands again to what's historically normal, we'll be back looking at the variable-rate tool as a real opportunity for us to save some dollars. But in today's environment, we're recommending to you that this go ahead as a fixed-rate transaction.
Thank you for working on this.
We like this kind of stuff.
Very helpful.
That's the entire.
You can read the geek words later, but we like this kind of stuff.
The entire 71 million.
The entire 71 million, yes. If the entire 71 million goes fixed, our new ratio would be 78% fixed, 22, I said that wrong. It'll be 82 and 18. 82% fixed, 18% variable, if we go 100% fixed on this issue. Again, we offer that as an information item. We, right now, the sale date is set for March the 20th. We need to stop the presses and back up some if you all have any desire to continue to look at variable rate.
Okay, any other questions? Any other business?
I just want to make one last comment on the last three nights. I know Hospice has had the Bluebird event in the borough here at The Grove, and saw Shane out there last night, but phenomenal turnout by the community, tremendous support. And I know that it, Hospice really means a lot to this community, and I want to thank everybody in the community for showing the outpouring of concern and care about that facility. So, thank you to everyone.
Just a reminder, the chamber's legislative connection is tomorrow morning at 7:30. The DOS Amendment, which is of incredible value to Murfreesboro and all of Tennessee cities, did pass unanimously out of Senator Kepron's Subcommittee Tuesday. It goes in front of the full Senate Finance Committee next week. Again, if you're there in the morning and you have a chance to remind any of the delegation to be in favor, greatly appreciated.
All right. There's one other thing I wanted to ask. We had talked about back during Christmas time about the Kronos add-on for public safety or fire. There was some, there's, I can't remember what it's called, something check or something like that?
It's not a, it's a different piece of software. It got purchased by Kronos as a company, Telestat.
Yeah, Telecheck, Telestat, yeah.
I'll check and find out. I don't know right now where it's at.
I think we left that with Pam and you. Were you?
We'll find out.
All right.
All right, seeing no other business, we'll stand adjourned.